Good evening and welcome to the July 7, 2025 Meeting in the City of Summit Zoning Board of Adjustment. My name is Scott Loikitz and I'm the Chairman of the Zoning Board. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in whose sole sovereignty and justice shall be held.
Thank you. In accordance with New Jersey Statute 10:4-10, adequate notice of this special meeting has been provided to a newspaper record. It's been posted here in City Hall. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For the benefit of the interested public, this meeting is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube page, also broadcast on Summit's government channel, which is Comcast Channel 34 and Verizon Channel 30. The transcript of this meeting is also being taken using video and audio, so we need all speakers to utilize one of the microphones in the room. Please note that the fire exits are to my right, your left, at the back of the room where you entered. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system of theirs, return it hereafter. Ms. Sands, please call the role of the member.
Vice Chair Zahn is excused. Mr. Yuko?
Here.
Mr. Malay?
Here.
Mr. Nelson?
Here.
Mr. Kirin is excused. Ms. Chiffo is excused. Mr. Feskins?
Here.
Mr. Chanchouli?
Here.
Mr. Nearing?
Here.
And Chairman Loikitz?
Here.
You have a quorum. You may proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Sands. Andy Ball is the zoning board's attorney. Mr. Ball advises the board members on matters of law. It's the key interface with the applicant's attorney. Mr. Ball does not vote on these applications. Jessica Sands is a city employee and is our zoning board secretary. Our board secretary works with the applicants, are preparing their applications, planning our agendas, and keeps the meeting minutes. The board secretary also does not vote on these applications. Also present are experts who are hired annually by the board to provide input. Tonight, we have Marie Raffa from Colliers Engineering. Also present is John Zabo from Burgess Associates, and he'll be acting as our board planner tonight. These experts are seated at the table to the right of the board, the public's left. They also do not vote on these applications. Our board consists of seven regular members and up to four alternates. All members can participate in the hearings tonight, but only a maximum of seven can vote. Most applications require a simple majority to be approved. Before we enter into executive session to vote on these applications, you'll be advised on how many votes are required to pass. Each case will begin with their applicant or their attorney giving an overview of the application, process, to date, the variances that are required, then hear from any additional expert witnesses the applicant may have to help explain the application, why those variances are needed. Board experts, followed then by the board members, may ask questions at the applicant, their attorney, and the expert witnesses. Due to recent cases running excessively long, we strongly encourage applicants and their experts to give brief and concise testimony, so we may get to as many cases as possible in a given evening. Once the board members and the board professionals have completed their questioning, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. This is not the time to tell us what you think about this case. That comes at the end of the hearing. Please be careful as how you phrase your questions. They should be not preceded with a statement about the case, but should be a direct question of the witness. Also, before you ask your questions, please clearly state your name, spell your last name, and provide us your address. It's important that a court reporter be able to keep a clear and accurate public record. After all witnesses have been heard, members of the audience have their second opportunity to speak. That's the time when you can express your opinion, positive or negative, about the application. Then the public hearing is closed and we enter into executive session. This is where the board members discuss the case and then vote. You'll be able to listen in to our executive session, but you will not only be able to participate in our discussion. I ask that each applicant and/or their attorney, if present, come up, give a brief synopsis of their anticipated testimony tonight, including the number of witnesses and whether or not they can finish their presentation within 30 minutes. So, we will begin this evening with 18 Sherman Avenue. Can you just come up, summarize, and tell us how many witnesses you have and if you'll finish in 30 minutes or less?
I think we're kind of jumping ahead. We want to know how long your testimony is going to go.
Just, yeah, just...
You don't want us to... Not yet.
We'll get to you very quickly, I promise. You can leave that there. It's totally cool.
Whatever you want.
All right. Do you want to, you want to tell us? Great.
Yes. My name's Vincent Ho. Do I need to state any other information?
No, just how many witnesses are you going to have tonight?
We have one.
Okay.
Our neighbor Ethan.
Perfect. Do you think you'll...
Tom Conway as well.
Even better. Do you think you'll finish in 30 minutes or less?
Yes.
All right, great. We will see you soon. Next, can we hear from Representative 9 Sherman Avenue? Come on up, guys.
Right here.
Yep, that's fine.
Hi, I'm Rob Delaney. This is my wife Paige Schleimer. We can complete our work in under 30 minutes, and Dave Rosen is here as our architect.
Okay, excellent. Did someone bring Kelly too, or no? All right. I was hoping for a triple. All right, thank you, guys. We'll see you soon. Next, 9 Valley View. Good evening.
Hi, I'm John Branchflower. This is Kathy, my wife. We're at 9 Valley View. I have a small project that is going to be done by Nick Giuliani. He's going to represent us, and we have no witnesses, and we'll definitely be done in less than 30 minutes.
Perfect. Thank you so much. We'll talk to you soon. And then finally, 136 Pine Grove.
Hi, my name is Bob Walden. This is my wife Danielle Walden. We're the owners of 136 Pine Grove Avenue. We're here with Tom Doris, our architects. We have no witnesses, and we'll be done in 30 minutes.
Okay, great. Thanks. All right, with all that, let's start 18 Sherman Avenue. We're going to swear you in.
Swear you in. Before we get started, anyone who's testifying, if you could please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
We do.
And then, one at a time, please state your name, spell your last name.
Vincent Ho, H-O.
Mary McHugh, M-C-H-U-G-H.
Thank you.
Do you want to give us a little synopsis about your project?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening tonight to the zoning board and other members of the community that are present. Thank you for having our project on today's agenda. My name is Vincent Ho, and myself and my wife Mary McHugh have lived in Summit since 2016. We added our son Samuel to our family in 2019 and Jack in 2024. We love our community and our neighborhood, and we moved into our current home in 2020. We have lived in 18 Sherman for over four years. The improvements we are presenting this evening have come to fruition over this time period. Like many older homes in Summit, our 1933 Tudor Revival needs an update to reflect modern living while maintaining its inherent charm. We have worked closely with our architect, Tom Conway, to present architectural plans that preserve the character of our home. Tom was able to take a thoughtful approach to design that respects the existing neighborhood aesthetic while incorporating necessary improvements for contemporary living. Great care has been taken to ensure the enhancements will blend seamlessly with the established streetscape. Thank you for your time and consideration of our project. We would like to turn things over to our architect, Tom Conway.
Perfect.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Thomas Conway, C-O-N-W-A-Y.
Thank you, and I'll note for the board, you've appeared before us a number of times, including recently. Any changes to your credentials since the last time you were here?
Nope.
I imagine the board would like to accept you back once again?
We would. Welcome back, Mr. Conway. Please proceed.
So, Mr. Ho did a great job of introducing what we're doing, actually, but what I want to focus in, to keep this short, is the three variances we're going to be looking for, which is a side yard setback on the left side, a side yard combined, and a floor area ratio. So, knowing that the house was built in the 1930s and in this neighborhood, which is in Zone R10, Lot 11, the property is actually a decent size for the zone, but it was, the house was developed very wide on the property. And also unusually, what they did was they put the garage in the middle of the property in the back, rather than putting it back like in freestanding in the back corner. That was very common in the '30s when they started adding garages and they weren't afraid of fire anymore. So, that's created some conditions, and also because what also exacerbates the renovation issues is that it is a Tudor, so it has kind of low ceilings on the second floor and it kind of, it's T-shaped. So, what we're doing is, we're renovating the first floor. That's already been permitted. That work is primarily a mudroom that sits between the garage and the main part of the house. And then, and then the kitchen. On the second floor is where we're really going to be concentrating tonight's discussion, and that's two additions. One that is over on the side, on the left side, where the primary bathroom, and then the back of the, the back of the house above the garage for a new extra bedroom. So, the house is conforming in most areas. We, as I said, the lot area is ample. Lot width is, is correct at 75. Front yard setback is 34, which is better than what's required at 30, and the rear yard setback is 61, which is better than 40. Side yard setback is the condition that we're really addressing, and that's on the left-hand side of this side of the house is actually 8.2 feet, and on the right-hand side of the house is 11.45 feet. We're, we're presenting to suggest a 9.0 new side yard setback, and I'll show you that in a minute. And the new, and the new combined, we're looking to go for 27.3 combined. The current side yard setback is at 26.2. So, here is the, the addition on the front of the house. That's the only real impact you'll see on the front facade. And we also did another rendition for Jim Bergmeyer. He had asked us to look at another condition where we would do half timber. We really would like to suggest keeping that stucco, so I just wanted to let you know that we, we did review it with the client. And on the side of the house, when you look, this is the addition that we're putting over the back for the new garage, above the garage for the new bedroom. And then on the rear, this is the new garage addition. Above there is a new bedroom with three windows across the back. As I mentioned, the house has the garage in the middle of the backyard. This is the new mudroom. This is the new laundry space we're creating, opening up the kitchen on the first floor. And then on the second floor, we're expanding the primary bedroom for a new private bathroom, and then a modified bedroom in the rear. So, the, the floor-to-air ratio is also a condition. We're slightly over on that. We're at 25%, and we're at 24.2 on the existing, and we're suggesting 26.1, which is a 1.1 over to meet that requirement. Now, what we are doing to the property is we are rethinking the way the property is used. So, we, the problem is that the garage sits in the middle, and you either have the choice of like kind of being on the driveway or being next to the house over on this side. So, we, we decide to remove this trellis and patio that's on the side, including the brick walkway, and, and put a new bluestone patio in the middle of the backyard where they can watch the kids and be able to see everything going on, rather than being tucked over to that side. We also itemized those changes regarding the building coverage calculations and the lot coverage calculations. Burgess had requested that as an itemized to meet our requirements, so I'd like to present that as exhibit. So, mark this as A1. Yes. Would you like me to go through that itemized? Or is that, I mean, we're just, it's just there to prove that?
Mr. Chairman, if the architect's going to swear and testify to the numbers...
Great, okay, great. Thanks. So, the positive criteria is that the proposed addition, roof lines, exterior materials, finishes, enhance appearance of the house. They're congruous with the neighborhood. The volumes are contextual. We've improved the energy efficiency of the house, and we're removing that non-conforming patio and pergola and walkway the left side. And, and the, all the other bulk standards comply. We are consistent with the MUL, the master plan, and we suggest that there is more public good than any detriment for the work that we would be doing. Are there any questions?
Can you explain to me how you're increasing the side yard on the left-hand side from 8.2 to 9?
Correct, okay. So...
You're not actually removing any walls. You're just measuring from the dormer to the property line.
Correct.
But the 8.2 still exists for the first...
Correct, it does. So, what, what we're talking about when we itemize it says new, and it says it as of the dormer, rather, so yes, the side yard setback maintains, and then the new dormer is set back. Right, that extra...
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A couple of questions. Can you, I knew you testified that you feel this application for proof would benefit, provide general public benefits. Could you be more specific? What kind of public benefits? Not, not just for the property, but public benefits?
Well, we're bringing the house more up to the neighborhood standards and the, and the town standards. The front facade and all the volumes that we're working on are all within the, the built environment. We are, we are renovating an existing vintage house and bringing it up to today's standards in a contextual way. We're not impacting the streetscape in a negative way, and we're also moving the activity in the house in the center of the property, behind the garage, in the middle of the backyard, rather than being pushed up against the adjacent neighbors.
Okay, good. And one other question. The reduction in building lot coverage by taking out the pergola and the patio and so forth.
Yeah.
The forester notes that creates an opportunity for some added privacy landscaping. I don't know, we want to address that? Does the applicant want to address that, or what you might do?
Sure. So, as it exists on the left-hand side of...
So, as it exists on the left-hand side of the property, there is a fence. I believe it's probably between seven and eight feet. The neighbors actually do have a tree that does provide a lot of coverage. There is quite a bit of privacy, but there is room there to maybe put like a privacy arbor if we felt that that was necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe I didn't see it, Mr. Conway, but are, are there any attic conditions that adversely impact your FAR calculations?
No.
No?
It's not in the attic. It's not the condition because of it being Tudor. It's just that the FAR tends to be stretched because of where the volumes are. So, rather than a colonial, which tends to be box and is a much more efficient layout, it tends to push the volumes. You have to walk through spaces to get to the different wings of the house.
All right. That's a good explanation. Thank you. Any other questions from the board for this witness? Yeah. Board experts, what do you have for this witness?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Well, since they're reducing the amount of lot coverage, there's no need for any, any stormwater mitigation. Are you changing any of the grading on the property at all with any of this? So, I have no further questions.
Great. Some observations.
Yeah. Sure. Okay. Before we let you wrap up, any questions? Questions only from the public for this witness. Seeing none.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I just wanted to clarify something from our reports because we have a number of FAR variances on tonight. We really didn't address the statutory criteria for that form of use variance. This board is used to D1, this is not permitted in the zone. And you've heard reference to the Medici standard and how difficult the D1 standard should and is. But what we're dealing with here is a D4, which is a floor area ratio. The lead case on that is Randolph Town Center versus Randolph. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. But the standard there is more akin to Coventry where there's a relaxation of the standard. It's not a D1. Where the courts have said that, it's kind of like because the use is presumed as permitted, you kind of treat the deviation as a variance almost. And what you need to focus on is whether the site can accommodate the deviation that's causing the variance, the use variance. The other aspects of the application with respect to the side yard is bundled into that, but also a consideration of the C. So, I just wanted to remind the board, we're dealing with a D4, not a D1. The standard is lighter, but still has to be, to be standard for negative criteria. So that there is no adverse impact, even though there's a presumption that it's a use that's permitted in the zone. And just a couple of observations. I mean, the applicant is working within the existing building footprint. I think that the changes are modest in terms of what is being created here. But my interest was that they are bringing the property into conformance of building coverage and lot coverage, which is two factors of intensity that I always focus on when I look at these type of applications. And plus, the character of the neighborhood is also a consideration for me. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I won't have to repeat that on the other end.
We'll keep that in mind. Thank you so much. Is there anything you'd like to say in conclusion?
No further comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. And now, looking for any comments from the public. Sure, please. You just come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your address.
Ethan Weisman, V.A.I.S.M.A.N. I live at 14 Sherman. I'm fully supportive of their project.
Let me just swear you in quickly.
Oh, sorry.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter? The whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thanks.
I'm fully supportive of Vince Mary's project. I think it's, it's great for our beautiful neighborhood, so.
Great. Thank you so much for that. Mr. Ball, how many votes do we need for this?
It's a D variance, so we need five votes.
Five and a... All right. So, with that, we'll go into executive session. Who would like to begin?
What do we have any conditions?
Oh.
I have not noted any. We do not have an engineer's report that we're going to refer to in this one. So, that strikes our usual condition. So, unless anyone else heard anything concerning that requires any conditions, I don't have any noted.
All right. Tom, since you brought up conditions, you have to go first then.
No problem. No problem. As has been mentioned a couple of times, I want to compliment the applicant for bringing the building coverage and lot coverage into conformity. That, that's a definite plus. I do hope you do some kind of landscaping over there. I'm not sure you need a condition, but I'm sure, it sounds like you want to. So, that, that's a good thing. I think it's an attractive plan. I think you're, you're maintaining the character of the house, which is always a good thing. I see no negative impacts to the, to the public, to the public good. I see no negative impairments to the zoning plan. The engineer noted it's no issue with water management, so we don't have to address that. So, I can support the application.
Thank you so much, Tom.
Yeah, I concur. I mean, this is, you know, pretty straightforward application. Again, there are no negatives. It's my old stomping ground when I grew up, so I'm kind of familiar with the neighborhood. So, I can support this project and good luck moving forward.
Just to keep it simple. Great. I agree with my colleagues. I applaud your sense of modesty, right? There's a lot of cases that come before us that really ask for the moon. Not that we ever granted unconditionally, but in this case, I appreciate everything you're doing to maintain the character of the home. I think your variance requests are incredibly reasonable. And so, with that, I can support your application as well. So, do we have a motion to approve?
To approve.
Second. Jessica, you call the roll, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Mullay?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feskins?
Yes.
Mr. Chanchuli?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing?
Yes.
And Chairman Loikitz?
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have nine Sherman.
Square the applicant in while you get set up there. If you could each raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter? The whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
And one at a time, please state your name, spell your last name.
Robert Delaney, D.E.L.A.N.E.Y.
Paige Schleimer, S.H.L.E.I.M.E.R. I'm holding on to Schleimer for some reason.
Thank you.
Welcome. Do you want to give us a little introduction while your architect sets up?
Yeah, sure. That'd be great. First of all, I appreciate everyone being here tonight to hear our story. So, Paige and I, Paige grew up in Summit. I grew up in Westfield. So, when we got married, we made the decision to move to Summit, which has been a great decision. We moved to Summit in 2020. We currently live on Oak Ridge Ave. And we actually really like our house and have really enjoyed our experience to date. But when the opportunity came up to buy a house on Sherman Ave, it was too good to pass up for a couple of reasons. I think there's a couple of big reasons. The first, you know, we definitely value the ability to walk to town and be close to, you know, kind of close to a school, closer to action. Where we live today is actually quite removed. But the more significant reason is Paige actually grew up on Sherman Avenue and her parents still live on Sherman Avenue. So, for us, this is kind of a no-brainer of our two boys. I should have mentioned our two boys. We have a four-year-old and an almost one-year-old. Our two boys having the ability to walk to Grandma and Grandpa's house. So, we're really excited about moving to Sherman Ave. What we're proposing here is some adjustments to the house that we think will make the space more livable for our possibly growing even bigger family. I heard, I know you heard me mention two boys. So, I think until, until we get a girl, it's probably, it's probably going to be more kids. And, you know, enlarging the master bedroom and more living space. So, Dave will get into all those details, but that's us and that's why we're here.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Mr. Rosen, can we square you in?
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter? The whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Dave Rosen, R.O.S.E.N. I'm a partner at Rosen Kelly Conway in Summit.
And you've also appeared before us a number of times, including recently, and changes to your credentials since the last time you were here.
Nope. Everything good.
I imagine you'll be accepted back once again.
We will. Welcome back, Mr. Rosen.
Thank you. So, as Rob mentioned, this house, coincidentally, same block as your prior, the prior application. But even more of a coincidence is that it's the block that Paige grew up on and that her parents are still there. Anyhow, so we're here to do, the picture shows, shows the front of the house. The house will look like this essentially when it's done. No change to anything of the image that you can see. The only difference really is that, from the street, is that in the back-left corner, there's a new mudroom that we're adding. So, in addition to that mudroom, we're expanding an office to make it into a family room and opening up the informal parts of the house with the kitchen, breakfast area, family room. And then, adding a primary bedroom suite on the second floor. On the third floor in the back, although it doesn't look like it from this photo, there is space in the attic. And we're just sort of cleaning up the back of the house because across the back of the house, there are, I'll just show you in a second here. There are three dormers across the back. There is a dormer setback over here on the right in this photo. There's the central part, which is a peak, but then it stops and it sort of collides with another dormer that's across the back. We're cleaning that up to make it one dormer, and I'll show you that in a moment. We are not adding any additional floor area on the third floor. There is currently 280 some square feet up there, which is storage. And we've just called one of them an office, but it's not real space. It's fairly low in most of it. So, we're not adding any additional square footage up there. But it takes up about 2.6% of the floor area ratio. Just to show you, just going back, the other thing that we're doing is, you can see on this image of the garage, we're removing that piece on the right, the shed. So, there's about seven or eight feet of width there. It's a non-conforming garage because it's too wide. It's wider than what's permitted for a detached garage. And we're removing that part with the idea that those things that somebody else had stored in that shed part would then be in the main body of the garage. And that allows us to be able to reduce the building coverage, which doesn't quite balance out. The additions that we're adding are a little bit bigger than that, but we wanted to make an effort to, to take away something that wasn't critical in order to allow the kinds of things that we do want. Just going back to the image of the front of the house. So, this is the, obviously, the photo of how it is. And then, on drawing V5, it's a little bit smaller, but you can see up here, that's the existing house. Everything remains on that. The only change is that in the back-left corner, set all the way at the back of the house, is that mudroom. Otherwise, the streetscape remains the same. And I'll show you in, in another image that this house is on Sherman and it backs up to the fields of Lincoln Hubbard School. So, there isn't a neighbor to the back. So, we concentrated the addition in the back, both on the first floor and then above that on the second floor. Let me just see. So, again, the image of the house. So, the variances that we need, there are three of them. And they're listed here, and I can make this a little bit bigger. This is in the project narrative, which you have. And it's just showing that the lot coverage is being increased by 68 square feet. That's it. We're, the lot coverage, we were able to remove a portion of the garage. We were able to reduce the size of the patio, eliminate a walkway. But as noted in the engineering report, a big part of the lot coverage is that the driveway extends from the, from the street all the way to the back-left corner to get to the garage. And so, that's, that causes the, the need for this, or it contributes to this variance. So, it's currently 37 and change, and it'll be 37 point, about 0.7, 37.7. So, it's an addition of 68 square feet and about 0.6%. Building coverage, which is allowed to be 18%, is currently essentially 18%. And we're increasing it by adding 126 square feet, so that it goes to 19.1. So, the building coverage will be over by 1.1%, a little more than that. And floor area ratio is, is going to be 28.88%. And as I mentioned, about 2.6 of that is in the current attic. We are not changing the statistic, although we're moving a little piece of that floor area just to make the, that third floor look a little bit better. So, we would, we have a total variance of 3.88. It would be about 1.2, 1.3 if not for the existing third floor. There are a few other things that are in this, the project narrative that I mentioned. I'm just going to get into them now instead of a little bit later because it's going to be, it'll just be a little easier. With regard to the floor area ratio variance, we have to show the positive criteria and, and show that the negative criteria are not significant. So, I've just highlighted, this is exactly what you have. I just highlighted some of it so you could look at some of these things. And the proposed additions, new roof lines and new exterior building materials, will all enhance the appearance of the existing house. That was also repeated by the Historic Reservation Commission representative. Energy efficiency will be greatly improved. The, the house has very limited insulation in some areas, like in the attic especially. We'll be doing that with the spray foam and so on, making it much more code-conforming, better windows, et cetera. One of the things that we're doing is even though we're only adding to lot coverage by 68 square feet, we're adding stormwater management that, as noted in the, in the engineer's report, that can accommodate over 700 square feet of the rainwater coming off of that. That's considered a real benefit to the community, both its immediate neighborhood, so that water is not spilling out onto adjoining properties, but also even more than that because the water is captured, held on-site, and then percolates into the soil so that it doesn't go down and cause flooding elsewhere in Summit or in, in other communities. We are moving toward compliance with the garage by reducing the size of the non-conforming garage. And just as a comment, all of the other statistics, the height, the setbacks, everything else is, is conforming. And then, for the negative criteria, we need to show that we're not doing something that could adversely impact either the adjoining properties or the character of the neighborhood or the, the purposes of zoning and the intent of the ordinance. And that's, to me, that seems pretty clear. That seemed to be repeated in some way in the planning and, and engineering reports. I can go through those a little bit more if necessary. But it does not have any adverse impact on the adjoining properties. In fact, it probably reduces some of the flow of water that may, in a heavy rain, may move either on the driveway and out to the street or from this property toward other properties. And the proposed additions do not significantly change the view of the house from the front, the perception of the overall size of the house or the density of the neighborhood. That was very deliberate in how we were adding on. There were, there were options to perhaps add to the side of the house and have a little bit more space, a little more play area in the back. But we added in... bit more space, a little more play area in the back, but we added in the back because there isn't a neighbor in the back. The screening, as John Linsen, the forester mentions, the screening is good, and so we wanted to maintain the feeling of this neighborhood. A lot of times when additions and renovations are done, there are big changes to the way that the streetscape feels. This is a quiet, level street. A lot of people walk their dogs or just walk themselves in the neighborhood, and so it's something where we didn't really want to have something that felt like a significant change. In going through the drawings, I'm not going to go through them in tremendous detail, but on V1, it shows the, this area that's in the sort of yellowish color, and that is, that all remains, but we're adding in the back right corner to square that off, and we're adding the mudroom that I mentioned in the left. And the garage, which is all the way in the upper left on these drawings, you can see that the garage, the proposed garage is significantly smaller by taking about a third of that existing garage away. And on the left, as you can see, are the same statistics over here in the blue and green that I mentioned, that I mentioned earlier for the, for the variances. So looking at the first floor, I don't know if you can see that much about it, but in the area over here, this, we added a little bit, so we squared off this corner, and as I mentioned before, added the mudroom over here. In moving the mudroom, we also shifted the driveway over to the left a little bit, just to go back for one second to the, to the photo. In the photo that shows the back of the house, you can see that there's an area where it's just lawn, so we have the room to move that driveway over. And just for reference, at the back of the house, this area in here, about the back corner of the, of the pickup truck that's there, that's about how far out the, the new mudroom will go. Just going back to the first floor plan, so that's the first floor plan. The other thing we did is, in the center of the house, it's, it's much more compartmentalized, a little more jammed up, so we took out the powder room that's in this area and moved it back to the mudroom so that now when you come in the front door, you can see all the way through. We don't have any separation. The kitchen is mostly remaining, but a little bit modified, and you can see back to the breakfast area and then the family room. There are no walls in between that, so it's all one open space, so it's more efficient and so we don't need, we didn't need to make the house any bigger. The last thing is, I just wanted to mention that the back, the extent of the back of the house, that's where the back of the house will be. So there's no, the back of the house is here, and that's, that's the line that we maintained in going across there. On the second floor, we have added the primary bedroom suite. And on the third floor, there's a diagram here with a lot of different lines to show that we have, we have not changed the floor area at all, even though we've cleaned up the appearance of the back of the house. We did renovate, we're renovating the basement. We're making some doorways that are currently shorter than Rob, a height where he could actually walk through, but it's mostly storage, and we're calling it an office on the third floor. Front of the house I showed you, and then just coming, just quickly on the back of the house, you could see that there are, in the upper part, in the upper part of the top drawing, you can see all those different roof shapes, and so we've tried to clean that up a little bit by just having that come across as a, as a single shed dormer. Going through the, the comments, I could run through these. I made some comments. There is in, I, I mentioned, it's in the engineering report that this, the property, which is, has the blue line around it, this is all Lincoln Hubbard, the school, the parking lot, and then the school is in the lower right of that. And so we don't have, as I mentioned before, we don't have the neighbors in behind. The vari, the variances are listed, the general comments, sorry, the stormwater management providing for taking over 700 square feet of roof area, even though we're only adding less than one tenth of that of new covered lot coverage. The removal of four trees, later on, John Linsen in, in the comments indicates, he actually indicates five trees, one he thought might get removed, so we left it with his note, but he had no objections. Air conditioning units will be, will be screened, and then the variance relief, as was just described, and just going through, there are a number of these, police department, the no objections fire, and Board of Health and so on. And so just coming down into the engineering report, items five, six, and seven, it says for the applicant to confirm in testimony, and I've covered these. The first one is that the garage, sorry, that what the addition is, number five just says, it's currently improved to two-story dwelling and so on. That is correct. Item number six, there's an existing survey that is, it's accurate. Number seven, that we're seeking variances for the construction exactly as I've indicated, and the engineering report lists them here. It goes through in item nine, building coverage, floor area ratio, and then although it's not in 10, sorry, 10 is floor area ratio, and then down here, this is impervious lot coverage, although it's not written quite the same way. No objections to the stormwater management. Just continuing on, sorry, the, John Linsen's comments, even with the proposed removal of five undersized trees, the proposed improvements are still well-screened, no objection. And then continuing on to the James Bergermaier's report from the Historic Preservation Commission, small first floor addition setback but visible from the street has no effect on the visual integrity of the front elevation. The rear two-story addition is not visible from the street, and then a variety of things that are compatible with the existing structure, and no objections there. Then that, that's, that's, that's it. So we're here for these three variances. We're providing the stormwater management in order to be able to make the property better than it currently is, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Great. Board experts, do you have questions for this witness?
Just a couple verifying things. Thank you for going through that. That was, that was, you answered pretty much everything in my letter. Is there any changes to the existing downspouts that are not being collected and going into the seatbridge pit in the backyard?
Some of the existing roof, the gutters and the leaders are going to be redirected to the stormwater management system that's, that's proposed, because currently there isn't any stormwater management, and so they just sort of come down and sort of go out into the yard or into the driveway and then out to the street and so on. So several of them, we have not determined which ones, but particularly those on the back of the house will be directed toward that, toward the new stormwater management.
So the one thing I just want to make sure of is that the stormwater system is sized appropriately to accept whatever stormwater is going into it. So if there's only going to be a tributary area and it's only going to be 743 square feet, I'm happy with that, but if you want to take the whole house and put that into the drywell, that drywell really should be sized to accept all of that.
Yeah, I agree, except in a, in a minor storm, taking a lot of that water in is, would be fine. I mean, the, it really is sort of a net difference, but we would probably do it the way that you prefer, which is just capture the water that would be appropriate to, in a, in a, significant rainstorm, put that in the stormwater management, and the rest could continue to do what, what it currently does.
What it currently does, okay.
And we would probably choose those that flow out into the yard to remain rather than those that go to the driveway.
Okay, thank you, that's good. And I may have missed it, but did we talk about any architectural plans for the, for the garage, or is that, is it just taking off the side shed on there?
And putting a wall in.
Okay.
And it'll be just a symmetrical little cute garage.
The height's not changing or anything like that?
Correct, right, yeah.
And I think that's, that's all we had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
I have no questions.
Great. Questions from the board?
I have one question. You had mentioned during, and maybe I just heard this wrong, that you're bringing the garage more into conformance.
Yes.
Is it going to be in conformance?
The garage itself will be conforming, but there's a setback of 1.9 feet rather than the four that's required. So that's why I didn't want to mislead on that. So the garage itself, yes, it's conforming, except in its location, because it's going to remain where it is.
Thanks for verification.
Thank you.
And the 1.9 feet, that's what it is now?
Yes, yeah.
Just a, a couple of questions. Was there any thought to moving the garage forward to alleviate that problem?
We haven't really gotten into that. If we did that, it would probably not require, we wouldn't need to come back here, that's still an option for us. We would make the garage so that we did not change the statistics for building coverage, that's a critical one. Lot coverage would be very slightly reduced because the length of the driveway, if we take two feet or something off of the driveway, that would make a difference. We haven't looked that carefully at what the condition of this garage is, but the intent right now is to take off the non-conforming part, that shed, and leave the rest. We could still do the, the other part, bringing it further into compliance.
If you find out there's problems with the garage structurally.
Yes.
And can you explain to me what the proposed window wells are for? Are those egress window wells for use of the basement or sleeping areas?
Well, it's just, it's mostly to let light into the basement, and so there's, the windows can be, can appear to be full-height windows in the basement instead of little tiny ones. They would provide egress. There's currently one stair to the basement. The windows would provide egress, but we're not putting a bedroom and so on down there, so it's not required to be that, but they would serve that, yes.
Mr. Rosen, could you approximate the distance of the reconfigured driveway edge to the property line? It looks consistent throughout, I'm just curious if you happen to remember what it was.
Give me a second here, let me just see if I can find which, if I find my drawings. Yeah, so it looks like it's, it's, I mean, it's straight, as you, as you mentioned. It's probably about, it's at least four feet, maybe.
Great.
Maybe a little bit more than that. It's certainly much more than the two feet that's required. It's at least double that.
Yeah, that's what I just wanted to hear, perfect. And then it looks like most of the tree removal is related to the reconfiguration of the driveway?
Yes.
And that there's no way to use the driveway unless you remove those trees, correct?
Right. There are four trees that are indicate, I'm going to blow this up just a little bit so you can see it maybe a little bit better. It still may not be terrific because they're very light, but there are two trees shown over here to the left of the driveway in line with the front of the house. By straightening it out, those two would be removed, and then there's two more farther back, sort of roughly in line with, to the patio, and those, we've shown one of them removed. John Linsen felt that it may be that both of them are removed, and then there's one by the patio, let me just see. So the one by the patio, which is shown on the proposed as where that curve is, that one could stay or be removed. It may be, the thing is that in the conversations with John Linsen, it was shown as being removed because we're adding there, so the addition is not there, but it's going to cut the roots so much that the tree would not survive. And so whatever gets taken down will be replaced with the appropriate size trees.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the public for this witness? Please, sir. Questions only. Yeah, come on up.
Hi, I'm John Coughlin, I live at 11 Sherman Avenue. We haven't met, but I'll be your neighbor. I was wondering, is there contemplated the addition in the back? Will that have a basement underneath it, an extension of basement?
It probably will, yes.
On June 11th, there was a notice of violation sent to 9 Sherman Avenue about sump pump discharge onto the street. I'm just wondering that the, the ball fields at Lincoln Hubbard many moons ago were a marsh, and so there are always big drainage issues there. If there's an addition to the basement, in addition to the violation that's already been noted with the sump pump discharge, will there be a remediation so that there's, no violation of the existing and no violation of the addition?
Yeah, let me.
So one of the other reasons that we wanted to make the stormwater management a part of this is because the prior owner, is that right, the prior owner got the violation? Or did you get it?
We got it, and we're addressing it right now.
Okay. So that sump pump discharge will be sent to a, a better place so that it's not flowing either onto the street or onto some other, somebody else's property. The, the note in the engineering report says that since the, correct me if I have this wrong, but since the change to the lot coverage is less than 300 square feet, that the stormwater management would not normally be required, we are adding 68 square feet and we're adding over 700 square feet of, of impervious area, meaning roof area, that would be sent into this. So the sump pump discharge will be corrected as a part of this if it hasn't already been.
Great.
Does that, does that answer your question? Yeah, and the other thing, the other.
I think they're as concerned as I am, so if it answers that question.
Okay, the, the, the other thing is that knowing that Lincoln Hubbard, there's sort of a low area there, the property, this property is quite flat, and the bat, the fields of Lincoln Hubbard are quite flat, but Woodland, going up to Woodland Avenue, there's obviously a big slope, so the water moves down in this direction. And we wanted to make sure that, that we were not contributing to that flow of water, but actually taking more of the water out of that system, putting it into the tanks underground and letting it just gradually dissipate into the soil.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Mr. Delane, do you have anything in conclusion you'd like to say?
Uh, no, unless you do. No, we appreciate everyone listening and.
But I would say on the drainage, if you're concerned, it's definitely something that I want to address. My parents live on the road and I am aware of it, as we're also aware because of the notice. I think a lot of what's contributing to it is Lincoln Hubbard, but yeah, I have little kids, I don't want them playing in a, in a marsh area in our backyard, and I don't want drainage in the front. I've heard it becomes icy, so it's something that we plan on addressing with all these other additions and improvements we're making.
And we weren't aware, when we bought the house, we kind of figured there probably was some challenges with the water, but we weren't aware of this issue until we got a letter, and so we've got a contractor over there, a couple who's got to figure out what to do, at least temporarily.
And we haven't lived in the house, it's just been renters, so.
Thank you. Now I'll open it up to comments from the public. Please. Welcome back, sir. We're going to have to swear you in.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And just once again, please state your name, spell your last name?
John Coughlin, C-O-U-G-H-L-A-N, and I live at 11 Sherman Avenue, next door.
Thank you.
Just a few comments. Seventeen years ago, I purchased a home on Sherman Avenue. The value of the home included the neighborhood. One reason myself or anybody else in this town is willing to make a significant investment such as that is that I knew zoning regulations concerning things like building coverage, lot coverage, and floor area ratio would preserve the appearance and character of the neighborhood. No doubt it was what attracted the new owners of 9 Sherman to the neighborhood. Zoning regulations are established by the community for the good of the community. Over my 17 years on Sherman Avenue, I've considered and made improvements to my home, but I understood that they would have to comply with zoning regulations. Otherwise, by varying from the zoning regulations, I would be appropriating some of that common good from my neighbors. I know variances are granted, but certainly only for compelling reasons. Otherwise, have, why have zoning regulations at all?
Otherwise, have, why have zoning regulations at all? As they said, the owners of 9 Sherman Avenue have yet to live in the house. Summit has a diverse and varied collection of properties that include larger homes on larger lots. Surely one can be found in Summit that wouldn't require a variance to the city's zoning regulations and compromise the nature of the neighborhood. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Ball, can you run us through conditions and number of votes?
So I have our usual condition noted, compliance with those conditions noted in the Board Engineers memorandum. I know there has been some talk about stormwater and I wonder if we want to consider a retaining stormwater jurisdiction as we often do. I see some-
I was going to suggest that.
See some heads nodding.
Yes.
So what that means is the board will typically retain stormwater jurisdiction for a period of two years after any improvements are completed. If any neighbors or anyone around sees any issues with stormwater, they have the ability to raise that issue to the city and bring it back to the board so the board can address those issues moving forward. So any issues with including that as a condition of this approval?
I don't, I don't really know what that means.
Yeah, I would defer to Dave on that.
Yeah, that's fine. What it means is that in the event that either the stormwater, if the soil doesn't percolate, many of the water goes in but can't flow out, if there are problems with the design of the stormwater management where for some reason it doesn't function as intended, then the board through the municipal offices can require that, like a second, a second strategy is implemented in order to solve the problem in the way that we're committing to. So it, it's pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah, no, that sounds totally reasonable.
And it's a period of two years because there can be different with the seasons and if it's a dry year or wet year or whatever. They, we just want to make sure that things.
Yeah, it's good sense of time.
Yeah. And similarly, I don't know if you're going to do a landscaping, but with the trees that are removed, will meet the requirements to put in additional trees and they'll have jurisdiction for that. So if something gets installed and it dies within two years, it gets replaced by, by you to make sure that the commitment that's made here is followed through on.
So I don't know if we were intending to maintain landscaping jurisdiction. I will note, the city code has the replacement requirements in there already, so I don't necessarily see the need for that in this case, but.
I think we're good with those.
Okay. So those two conditions, similar to the last one, we have a de-variance of five votes are required to approve this application.
Great. With that, we'll enter into executive session. Who would like to begin?
Oh, sorry. The best thing I can say is I think this is a very modest addition and work to that with the exception of the, the, being over with the floor area ratio that's already a pre-existing condition, so you're not really making it worse. You're just adding a little bit to it. I am troubled by the, the neighbors' comments about the water conditions, but since we're maintaining control of that for two years, I feel a little bit better about that. I can support this application. I just need to make sure that the, the applicants follow through on those violations that you received for the sump pump and make sure that, that it definitely falls into this stormwater management process. All right, so I can support this application. I don't think, I don't think the negatives outweigh the positives, so. Tom?
Scott. Yeah, I mean, I know we're not supposed to prepare applications, but your, the earlier application on the same block was a less of an ask, this is somewhat of a bigger ask, especially in the floor area ratio. But the positives are that if you're maintaining the front, streetscape, look at the house to the front, the backyard has been mentioned a couple of times, backyard neighbor is, is an open space of the same property, so there's no direct backyard neighborhood or anything impacted. And you're doing a positive thing in terms of adding the storm reach art system where you theoretically didn't have to, but I think there, we've heard overriding considerations, which probably makes a very good idea to do something with the, with the stormwater management and that we're going to retain jurisdiction. I think there's ample, there's been ample testimony that the positive criteria are met and there is not a significant negative impact on the public good and the zoning plan. I can't say there's none, but I don't think it rises to the level that I would want to vote no. So having said all of that, I, I can be in favor of this application too.
I agree, you know, just to expand on what they've both said, because I think a lot of what they said is very consistent. The, the fact that you're bringing the garage more into compliance, and I think there is the, as you evaluate the reconstruction of it, if you can bring it further into compliance, but I would not require that, that benefit, I think, is one of the contributing things here. Also, when I look at the FAR, I look at the way you designed it. You know, is there ways to shave it off? But you're really kind of boxing it in. And I think it's a natural kind of evolution of where this would normally size out to be. So when you factor in that it really is all behind you, you're making good efforts to bring things more into compliance, providing storm water management, which is something that is so much of an issue throughout the entire community, I can see that the, the benefits of what you're doing more than outweigh any of the detriments. So therefore, I can support this.
Thanks, Jay. I too can support your application. I, I think you're, Jay, hit the nail on the head. You're, the fact that you're making an effort through the garage reduction to come closer into compliance is, is noteworthy for sure. I appreciate your neighbors' comments about people trying to not apply for variances, but you know, we, we're here because the zoning is not a perfect document. And we, we try and hold people as close to conformance as we can, but we understand that it's not a one-size-fits-all document. And I think this is a perfect case of that where you're trying to get as close to the spirit of the law as possible. And I know this board greatly appreciates that kind of effort. And I agree with the HPC's comments that there's no noticeable, visible effect of your addition onto the streetscape. And I just think it's, it's maximizing the renovations and additions into as little footprint as possible. And I really appreciate that kind of effort. So with that, Jessica, can I, oh, can I get a motion to approve, please?
Sure moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Jessica, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Yucco?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feskins?
Yes.
Mr. Chanchuli?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing?
Yes.
Chairman Lygits?
Yes.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Do you guys want to power through or do you want five minutes?
Power through.
Good. All right, great. Can we get 9 Valley View, please?
Welcome.
Hi.
And I'll swear both of you, and if you could each raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony? You could both go at the same time. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And one at a time, please state your names, spell your last name?
John Branchflower, B-R-A-N-C-H-F-L-O-W-E-R.
Kathy Branchflower, B-R-A-N-C-H-F-L-O-W-E-R.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Well, first of all, thanks very much for, for considering our application. We appreciate your time. We appreciate any consideration you would give us. We'll defer to Nick, our architect, to give you the details of what we're proposing. But let me give you a little background information on our family. We've been in Summit here since 1981, so 45 years. The first part of that, we lived on Blackburn Road and we've moved to our current house, 9 Valley View, about 2004. So we've been here 20 years. This is a continuation of a, a major remodeling project that we underwent in 2020. And it sort of finishes, you know, the vision that we had for the, the house at that time. And Kathy was a teacher at Lincoln Hubbard for 20 years, so. Oh, and our son lives about two blocks away too, so now you know the whole family story.
Thank you so much. Do you have a architect with you tonight to testify?
We do. Nick Giuliani, and he'll take it from here.
Great.
Good evening, board.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your names, spell your last name?
Nicholas Giulliano, G-I-U-L-I-A-N-O. And I'm a partner with Rosen Kelly Conway Architecture and Design.
Thank you. And I believe you two have appeared before us relatively recently and changes to your credentials since last-
Nope, all in good standing.
Great. And we'll accept you back once again.
Welcome back. Please proceed.
Glad to be back. Yeah, so our, our presentation here is seeking one variance for building coverage for the proposed improvements. Pick up where John left off. The house was renovated pretty extensively in 2019 and 2020. It was a 1950s typical kind of ranch-style home. John and Kathy elected to kind of keep it that way. It was mostly one-story living. Almost all of the rooms in the house, aside from one, are on the first floor, bedrooms, living room, kitchen, garage, and just one office space on the second floor. So it primarily remains as a ranch home, just kind of re-envisioned as a little bit more modern than what the previous house was. So as a result of that, you know, most of the building coverage on this property is taken up by the house itself as opposed to a typical property where, you know, you're breaking up the rooms on two floors. So, and as such, we're not left with a lot of building coverage for actual site improvements. So all the work that we're requesting approval for is pretty minimal in terms of size. It just puts us right over the threshold on building coverage because we're kind of working with so little to begin with in terms of availability. And the project itself, if I go to the existing plan here, shows the existing house and it kind of forms a nice C shape around kind of the inner backyard area. It's a corner lot, this property, so two front yards. They don't really have much of a backyard on the property. The lot line is along this side here and then further out on the side over there. Across the street, there's a neighbor on this side and the school directly in front on the other side here. And we did a new deck here and a smaller patio as part of the 2019 project. They've been in the house a few years now, kind of living with how the spaces have been designed. The existing decks proposed a few challenges. One, it gets very bright in the back and it makes kind of the living spaces that are all situated around the deck hot. A lot of light gets in unwanted. And the deck itself, you know, as a result of that, is kind of decaying a little bit faster than they'd hoped. You know, the wood surface of it is starting to fade. So we're looking at kind of just re-envisioning this whole area to begin with to make it a little bit more durable and maybe provide a little bit more shade for them. The space itself kind of functions as like an outdoor extension of the living room because it's right off of the kitchen, the dining space and the family room. So what we're proposing for the area is not dissimilar to what's there now. Rather than a deck and a separate patio, we're proposing kind of one level of patio space. And we'd like to add an outdoor kind of fireplace and spa as well, and a pergola that could have a retracting awning on top of it, just to provide shading to these areas when needed. And then off to the side, go back to the site plan for a second. The other corner of the project is a storage shed in the far corner of the property, mostly just to double as storage for a lot of the garden equipment. John and Kathy have a heavy gardening program at this property. I don't know if any of you live nearby or have received any of their vegetables or herbs, but they do a lot of gardening on that side of the property. The garage is all the way over here, so we just want to add a storage shed in this corner that's a little bit more directly accessible for them so that they don't have to go all the way to the other side of the property and use the garage as kind of storage shed area. So we want to add a larger shed than what's there existing. If we go to the last sheet here, this shows kind of the re-envisioned area of the patio where it's all at one level. And it's just a stone patio now, not a wood deck anymore. This back piece here in dark color just shows where the fireplace wall is and the ground spa here. And the dashed line above is where the pergola is, just above the seating area directly in front of the fireplace. This patio area here that connects to the primary bedroom is uncovered at all times. And just to reiterate, the pergola only has a retractable roof on it, so it won't be covered at all times. It's only covered by fabric when they're out there using it on a sunny day. But that does count towards building coverage, you know, because the ordinance counts trellises, whether they're, you know, completely roofed or open, still has building coverage because they're taller than 12 inches. And if we go to the rear elevation, the next sheet, the existing rear view of the house that you'd see from the neighboring property just shows the primary bedroom wing here, the living area set further back, and then the entry to the house off of Sunset Drive and Mud Room here. If the closed elevation, the mass of the house primarily stays the same. Really what we're adding is just this partial height stone wall that has the fireplace on the other side facing inward toward the property. And then this lower portion of the wall shields the back of the spa. And we have a cross-section view on the sheet as well, just that shows the view of it from the other side as if you were in the house looking outward. Shows the fireplace, the spa, which is only a foot above the patio. It's depressed into the ground and fireplace as well. And if we go to the final sheet here, it shows just a view of the storage shed. We're mostly using a lot of cues from the main house to pick up on the design motif for the storage shed. Same roof pitch and roof shape, similar types of windows and similar vertical siding with just a big sliding door in the middle, just to be able to get equipment easily in and out, wheelbarrows, larger pieces of garden equipment, things like that. Here, here just shows, the lot itself is relatively flat. There's really no new grating as, as part of this application. The patio is really at the same level as the existing deck and mostly the same footprint. You know, we kind of made it a little more rectilinear to go with the house as opposed to the current patio that's a little more rounded on the edges, but for the most part, it's the same footprint. And then the storage shed back here, the property lines there is all conforming in terms of setbacks and height and footprint, but it does add to the building coverage total quantity. So we're including that in the variance. You know, in terms of the positive criteria, everything that we're adding is pretty well screened in, in terms of the fireplace wall and the patio and the spa. It's all kind of contained within this C shape of the house. And all along the property wall on this side is evergreen plantings and pretty mature arborvitae's and tall plants. So the neighbor on this side really doesn't have much of a view into the active patio area here because of the existing vegetation there. And even less so now with the stone wall that we're building to put the fireplace and the spa on the other side. There's almost kind of another layer now that shields the view of all the activity in that area from the neighbor on that side. From Sunset Drive and Valley View, none of the work in this area is visible. And the storage shed, although it is visible from Valley View, it is conforming in terms of its footprint and its height. So we don't really think that the shed itself, although it's counted in building coverage, has any negative impact on the streetscape, you know, given that it is a conforming size in and of itself. And just, you know, for the other parts of the project, all setbacks on the house that are existing and new with the proposed additions are all compliant. Impervious coverage on the property, even with the proposed addition, is still, you know, almost 5% lower than what's maximum allowable. And stormwater management, our, the planner, I believe, made a note that the amount was, you know, less than what was required to add supplemental stormwater management to the property. And the storage shed itself- stormwater management to the property. And the storage shed itself as well, we're planning to install rain barrels at the leaders for it so that some of that water can be used, you know, actually to do plantings and not, you know, get redirected and not be just run off from the storage shed itself. And in the patio area, the footprint mostly remains the same as what's there now, so we wouldn't really be adding any kind of gutters or leaders in that area because it's all freestanding anyway. So that's pretty much the gist of the whole project, and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Board experts, do you have questions for this witness?
All right, so I noticed that you're adding in the rain barrels on the shed. The impervious coverage, the additional impervious coverage on the site is less than the trigger of the brand and square feet, so there's no necessary stormwater mitigation.
I just want to add, too, that we did install a new drywell in the 2019 renovation project.
And what goes into that?
A few liters off the house that are on that side of the property. The drywells in this area and all of the liters that are on the right side of the house are piped into that drywell, and the liters on this side just drain, you know, she-drain out to the street. So but nothing onto the neighboring properties.
Okay. Could you talk about, there's some planters that are along the frontage on Valley View. Could you talk about their structure, about maybe how tall they are? Do they have holes in the bottom?
So they're all completely pervious on the bottom. There's no bottom to them, per se. They're just the metal sidewalls, and then it's just soil all the way down. So they don't constitute impervious coverage. The height of them probably ranges from maybe 18 inches to 30, I would say, probably. Yeah. The ones that are on the, in front of the fence on Valley View Avenue, those we just, we're kind of interpreting them as almost just plants, you know, and vegetation that's in the area, the 10 feet within the right-of-way. The ordinance does permit, you know, as long as they're below a certain height, that hedges and shrubs can be within 10 feet of the pavement line. So we're assuming that they're okay to just stay, given that they aren't tall hedges that would block any kind of view for traffic or anything like that. So we'd like to be able to keep them there.
I'd like to add one comment there. It's, we grow pumpkins there, and the neighborhood kids pick out their pumpkin and watch it grow the whole season, and then take it home for Halloween. That's pretty much what we use that for.
So it was our planters report that highlighted maybe they should be moved because in the right-of-way. I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on now hearing that they are pervious on the bottom, or?
I'm fine with the impervious in the bottom. That's more of a stormwater management issue. It's no different. And with respect to the hedge, I mean, it's no different if you planted a hedge versus the shell of a metal that's holding a plant. I don't really see an objection.
But if it were impervious, if it were impervious in the bottom, you might have a different opinion, I would think.
I might have a different opinion.
You might, yeah.
It would certainly some of that would have to be considered, you know, in the application. If this were permanent planters, if they were planted and embedded in the ground, that I think would be, that would be more problematic, but these could be shifted around. I don't see an issue.
Yeah, we plan to keep them as completely pervious and under whatever height limit, you know, the ordinance requires, you know, within the first 10 feet of the pavement. So no future plans to get taller or make them any more pervious.
Any other questions?
No, I have no further questions.
Mr. Zepplin.
Will the shed utilities and lighting catch that?
We'll probably have an outlet or two and just basic utility lighting. No gas, no heat or air conditioning. I don't think we will have any plumbing, no.
Thank you. Questions from the board for this witness?
Just one simple one for the shed. That's, is that going to be built on-site or their footings, or is that a shipped-in shed?
We're going to build it on-site because we have a somewhat custom design for it. We're trying to make it a little bit more visually interesting. So we have kind of a custom vertical board and batten siding that we're going to do on it. The windows, we're just getting from a window company, so it'll be stick-built on-site.
There's no footings or anything?
Yeah, there will be. It'll be, we're planning to make it as a slab. Yeah.
Can you just go over the dimensions, why you chose 14 by 22 versus, I mean, it looks like substantially smaller shed today? Just generally understand why you chose those dimensions.
Well, we increased it just because we don't really have enough storage space in the current shed. You know, after having it for a few years and seeing the day-to-day, you know, activity and how much space is really needed for the gardening and other activities, we would like to get a larger shed. We didn't want to ask for anything larger than the 24 by 24 maximum accessory building footprint, and 22 feet put us, you know, at a point where we had the length we wanted, and we wanted to keep it a little narrower. Just, you know, we kind of envision it that you walk in, and it's kind of a double-loaded storage space where we can have storage on both sides and, you know, enough walk area in between. So that kind of just landed on the size that worked out nicely for us to be able to keep it four feet from the property line, for it to meet the two-times front-yard setback requirement for an accessory structure, and still leave enough room between the shed and the house itself to not encroach too much upon the yard space. So we don't have, and it doesn't need to be that exact size, but that's the size that we landed on that worked for our program.
Anyone on this side? Tom?
I'm good.
Any questions from the public for this witness? Seeing none. Mr. Branchflower, is there anything you'd like to say in conclusion?
No, we, again, appreciate your time and whatever consideration you give us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any public comments? Seeing none. Okay. Mr. Ball, conditions and number of votes to approve?
I have just one condition. Compliance with those conditions noted in the board engineer's memorandum, and we only have a single C variance involved, so four votes are required to approve the application.
All right. Thank you so much. And with that- We will open the executive session. Jay?
Nope.
No?
Sure, I can do it. So thank you for the clarification on the shed. I think, understanding just kind of how you got boxed into it, it helps me understand the rationale here. To me, the way I look at this is your existing house that you chose to renovate really kind of creates, without actually saying it, a hardship for you to meet the compliance with these other requirements. I get being in outdoor space that is not going to be functional in the super-hot days and wanting to create shade, and it's a technicality of the way that the code works. So from a functionality point of view, I get it. It's in the back, you don't see it. You're already removing some of the existing deck and making it all work, and functionally, I think it all makes sense. Benefits, I think you're making it a lot more functional, usable. Your outreach to the community with the pumpkin patch, it was a great little detail. Thank you. From a detriment point of view, again, it's in the back, you don't really see it. I think the shed ends up, you know, being designed aesthetically to a compliment. I wish you'd shrunk it down a little bit, but I can't see anything wrong with it, so I support.
Thank you, Jay.
I agree. The shed, you know, I get the shed. Wish it was a little smaller, but I get it, but I can support this application. Great.
I can support the application as well. I think the shed has gone to extreme detail or extreme effort to make it match the rest of the house. And I just want to say, I think it's a beautiful house you have there. It really is nice. I support it.
I also agree with my colleagues. I think Jay said it well, but the idea of the pergola counting against you, it really feels like maybe it's not perfectly appropriate in this case. And if you pull that out of the equation, this seems like an entirely reasonable ask in terms of improving your property and improving your home. So with that, I can support this application as well.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So will.
Second.
Second.
Jessica, can you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Mr. Yucco?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
No.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feskins?
Yes.
Mr. Chanchuli?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing?
Yes.
Chairman Leggett?
Yes.
Thank you, board.
Thanks, everybody.
Finally, we have 136 Pine Grove.
I will swear the applicants in. If you could each raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give on this matter of truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And one at a time, please state your name, spell your last name.
Bob Walden, W.A.L.D.E.N.
Danielle Walden, W.A.L.D.E.N.
Thank you.
Great. Welcome. Do you have any introductory words you'd like to share with the board?
Yes, we do. Thank you for hearing our application, board. My wife and I moved into our home at 136 Pine Grove Avenue in July, June of 2020. Since that time, we've had two additional children, so we now have four children in the home. And our family has grown, as you can tell, to kind of outpace what we have presently. We're looking to make a couple additions to the home with Tom Doras as our architect. We love the community. We love the area we live in, you know, by the Ashland and Soldier Field. Our kids go to play there every single chance they get. I'm just looking to stay in the area that we have and really just improve on our home. So.
Great. Thank you. Welcome. We're going to swear you in.
Sure.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give on this matter of truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Name is Thomas Doras, last name D.O.R.E.S.
Thank you. And can you briefly describe your background and experience for the board?
Sure. I have a Bachelor of Architecture degree from New Jersey Institute of Technology in 2010, and I've been working as an architect in the field for the past 15 years or so.
Licensed in New Jersey, in good standing?
Yes, in good standing, correct.
Any questions from the board? Would you like to accept those credentials?
We will. Welcome. Please proceed.
Okay, so I'll be working off of my iPad. Unfortunately, the cord, I don't have to project on the screen, so you'll just have to kind of follow the drawings, and I'll guide you along the way. I'll just start, I'll draw your attention to sheet EX 201, the existing elevations, just to get kind of familiar with the house. So it is a modest-sized house, Dutch colonial style, so the second floor is a bit pinched in from the first floor, a little more compact. Modest spaces on the interior, but I'd like to draw your attention to the side elevations, drawings number two and three on EX 201. From the front to the back of the house, there is quite a dramatic slope, which is impacting some of our design and is sort of the reasoning behind some of the variances we're asking for. Also, in those side elevations, you can see on the rear of the house, there's an existing, you know, covered enclosed deck is what it is called in the plans. So the scope of work involves reconstructing that enclosed deck to be finished space and then adding a second-floor addition on top of that for a primary bedroom suite. Now, kind of shuffling back to the first sheet, A100, that is our zoning analysis sheet and our site plans. So on the left, you have existing site plan. On the right, you have the proposed site plan. So as you can see, that one-story porch is being reconstructed with a second story above it. So one of the variances we're asking for is lot coverage. We're increasing that by about 0.2%. The reason for that increase is because if you kind of look closely at the right side, the right rear side of the house, the existing enclosed deck is pinched in a bit, offset about five inches. The reconstruction of that porch is going to be flush with the existing wall, so we're picking up an extra five inches, which is why there's sort of that really slight increase in lot coverage.
Just to clarify, the lot coverage, it's 0.02% increase, right?
Point.
Yeah, there was a tiny percent.
Yes, correct, correct. Even less than I said. Correct. The, another variance, the second, is the side yard setback on the left side of the house where eight is required. We are proposing 3.6, but the addition and the reconstructed porch, we are aligning that with the existing wall of the house, so that 3.6 feet is an existing nonconformance already. So we are not exacerbating that. We are staying in line with the existing conditions. The third variance, which is a story variance, after we had a spot grade analysis by our engineer, it was determined that the basement floor counts as a story. So I believe in the ordinance, it states that if the story above the basement is more than six feet above average grade, then the basement counts as a story. The spot grade analysis determined that the average grade, the average height of the first floor, the height of the first floor above average grade is 6.79 feet. So that puts us about nine inches over the threshold. So we are very close to that threshold, but unfortunately, the basement is considered a story, so we are dealing with an existing nonconformance of a three-story house. Last variance, the fourth, is an FAR variance, where 35% is allowed. We are proposing 36.3. The existing is conforming, but proposed obviously is not. But we did want to bring your attention to kind of the analysis below our zoning chart where we show if the basement had not been considered a story, then our proposal would be within the limitations of FAR. So had the basement not been determined to be a story, then our FAR would have been 28.5. So, you know, just wanted to bring your attention to the slight, the slight height difference or height, you know, above the height limitation of the house, which led to the FAR variance. I will jump into the proposed plans on sheet A101. So starting from left to right, we have basement, first floor, and second floor. On the first, on the basement level, we are proposing three structural columns to hold up the reconstructed porch and the second-floor addition. So those would just be three kind of CMU piers holding up the structure above. There is no increase to the footprint of the building. The first-floor plan, what we're proposing is that reconstructed porch will be new living space tied into the existing house, so you'll have more of an open kitchen and dining layout, where there's currently sort of a really compact kitchen and eating areas that are very closed off from one another. The second-floor addition will accommodate a primary bedroom suite. So again, we're aligning with the outside walls of the house going straight back to accommodate a walk-in closet, sleeping room, and primary bathroom. Fast-forwarding to sheet A201 is where we show the proposed elevations. So you can see sort of the two-story addition being proposed over sort of the walkout basement at the rear. We're proposing a roof line so that the gable roof kind of is oriented side to side. So what we can say is a positive about the design is that although the side yard or the side of the structure encroaches on the side yard setback, the soffit lines are fairly low because we're pulling them down to the sides. You can see here also on drawing number one, the walkout basement and garage area. I think one of the review comments questioned the clearances around the proposed columns. Currently, in drawing number one, the spacing between the columns is nine feet. A typical garage door is eight or nine feet, so we stuck with that dimension. We felt it was, you know, manageable, but it's not fixed. It's up for discussion. I think we can take that center column and move it toward the center of the structure if the board feels more comfortable with that, even get the owner's input on whether they would prefer that. And really, lastly, I just wanted to kind of circle back on the story variance. So again, our spot grade analysis determined that the first floor was more than six feet above average grade, so that was one of the definitions of story above grade in the ordinance. But there are two other definitions of story above grade within the ordinance, so three total. So if one is kind of affecting your structure, then you have a story above grade. But the other definitions within the ordinance are where finished surface of the floor above the basement is more than six feet above the- the basement is more than six feet above the grade plane for more than 50% of the total building perimeter, then the basement is not a story. So based on our architectural survey of the house, which sticks tight to the house, we found that that grade line around the house, slightly over 50% of the footprint of the house was below the six feet. So with that rule, we do comply. And then the third definition of story above grade is where the finished surface of the floor above the basement is more than 12 feet above the surrounding grade at any point along the foundation, then the building, then the basement is considered a story. So at no point throughout the house does the first, is the first floor more than 12 feet above grade. So within those three definitions, we comply with two. So we just felt we wanted to kind of raise your attention to that to help our argument. And with that, it's my conclusion of, you know, the design explanation. So any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Great.
Board experts, what questions do you have for this witness?
So because they're not increasing the impervious coverage greater than 300 square feet, there is no stormwater mitigation. I don't see any grading changes being made, so I don't have any further comments or questions.
Mr. Zappa.
Mr. Chairman, the questions we've raised have been addressed by the applicant. Whether it's satisfactory for the board, it's going to be a decision. They've addressed what the impervious, the report.
Okay. Thank you so much. Board, what questions do you have for this witness?
I have a couple of technical things from the planner's report. So the architect says it's currently three stories. The planner report seems to imply that maybe it's currently two stories, but I think it's three stories for the same technical reason relating to the addition and the grade, so.
To me, it's a three-story. From what I can see from the drawings and the measurements and everything around it, and I think I have an abundance of caution, the board should consider that as part of the package of variances that are to be considered tonight for the favor of the.
So going from two to three. Yeah, okay. And are you in agreement with that?
To my, I felt that the existing structure was already three stories based on the analysis. So I felt we were going from three to slightly larger three.
It, it does appear as a three-story, as it exists today to me, to my eye in reviewing the application. So I wouldn't disagree with the assessment of the.
You would not?
I would not disagree.
Okay. And then, just a technical thing, just for paperwork reasons, I think there's a typo in your report, planner report, about the lot coverage, I think should be 42.
Yeah. So that is a typo.
Okay.
Glad I didn't make that up.
I won't say, won't tell Ed you said that.
So let me now clarify to make sure I have the right figure. Are you saying 32.42 as opposed to 32.24?
No, it's 43.22, not 40, not 32.22. They, Burgess Board has 32.
Got it.
Should be 42.
That, that makes a whole lot more sense.
Yeah, the architect's report is correct, the architect's.
So we are, we are currently at 42.22. We are moving to 42.24, right?
I have 43.22 to 43.24.
I think Burgess.
Forty-three.
Yeah, it's forty.
Forty-three.
Forty-three to.
Yeah.
Got it.
Such a small change. Thank you. However you look at it, it's a very small change.
43.22 to 43.24.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, could you describe the current conditions in terms of water flow? And you mentioned a pretty steep slope, and it's pretty visible from visiting the site.
Right.
And in your drawings, can, can you or the homeowners describe a little bit what happens to the water?
We didn't, the architect, we as the architects didn't do any analysis on stormwater or drainage. I don't know if the owner has any.
Have you noticed any issues in your backyard or?
We've, the water flows from, obviously from the street down to the, down to the back. It mostly drains into the, into the grass in the back. You know, we've had considerations where we may at some point do a gravel driveway instead of a blacktop, but we haven't really thought about that at this stage. But mostly it drains into the, into the back of the grass.
But no flooding issues or anything?
No.
Yeah, just a question for you. So the three-point, I think it's a 3.6 feet side yard setback, is that right?
Correct.
And is that from, that's from the building line, not from the soffited roof?
From the building.
What does the soffited roof add to that?
Our overhangs are currently at two feet, so.
So.
So it's like one and a half feet from the, the property line.
Can you go into why you're putting that soffited roof, at least on, from your elevations you're showing on the three floors, essentially at grade?
Right, right. So the, the canopy roofs at sort of the, the first and second floor levels are really, you know, a design decision to kind of camouflage the, the new massing. At the top level, the 24 inches, it could be pulled back. It's, it's a bit generous. And the existing overhang, the overhangs of the existing house are less than that. I don't know the exact number, but the 24 inches that we are showing can, can be pulled back to, you know, 12 inches, just enough to get ventilation for the roof if, if that's more desirable.
From a code compliance, or code point of view, does that overhang count as your set, your side yard setback encroachment?
We, we counted it towards the, the building. We did not include the roof. And as far as my research, you know, the, the ordinance is to the, to the building, not the, the roof overhang.
Think if it's.
I don't know if that's.
Greater than 24 inches, the roof overhang, then it counts.
So I'm pulling it up. Thirty-five.
That's why I asked the question.
Thirty-five dash 13.4. Permitted encroachments into the setbacks and yards are chimneys, not more than 24 inches. Overhangs, bay windows, trellis, front yard only, but the overhangs reference does not have a particular limitation of 24 inches.
Okay. And then the other question I would have is, you know, I, I may have missed this, but I believe the minimum, the width of this lot is actually under, in terms of its 50 feet versus 60 feet?
Correct.
So if you add that extra 10 feet, is possible that you would be in conformance?
Correct. Yeah.
Hang on, I might have been reading from the wrong zone, so let me, let me do a little more scrolling, and if anything changes, I'll let you know.
One last question. You'd stated that your, your family's grown. Congratulations. I have more than two kids, so I know how that is. How are you addressing the issue here? You're not really adding more bedrooms.
We have a 13-year-old, an 11-year-old, and then a seven-month-old and a two, a two-year-old. So we have two kids from a previous marriage, so they're not with us all the time. They're with us 40% of the time. So to utilize, like, I didn't really want to make four small bedrooms and have one of the bedrooms not be used 60% of the time, you know? So we decided to just double up. They're going to be in college when our little ones are seven, so it just makes more sense to make use of the space that way.
Okay.
That was one item in the design that I didn't go over. That front bedroom, which is currently one bedroom, is being subdivided into two. So at the end of the day, yes, we have three bedrooms on the second floor, as are existing, but they are larger bedrooms because the two existing rear bedrooms are rather small.
Okay.
Mr. Malay?
Yeah, I see a problem here because we do have a 3.6 setback from the neighbor to the north from Lot 20, and we're not making it any better. I mean, we, we know that it is an existing condition we have to live by, but we're making it worse. We're reaching here 3.4 at the end of the proposed addition. Did you, was there any other option to avoid that, that, you know, exacerbating the conditions as they are?
We.
Especially when we are at a higher elevation.
This distance from the building. Building to building.
To the, to the neighbors will be really a problem. I mean, especially with this. So did you consider any other option?
We, typically, we run through, you know, multiple design iterations early in the process. And originally, we had several that kind of stepped in a little bit or were slightly narrow, but this in the end was the preferred option. And we felt by, you know, keeping things within the footprint of that existing enclosed deck was a reasonable ask. So at one point, we had options that, you know, extended beyond the existing deck. And in the end, we determined that it was probably our best bet to keep it within that existing footprint. So that really was the, the driving force to stay within that footprint is.
Further to that, Mr. Doras, is there any advantage architecturally or structurally from aligning the addition to the existing perimeter wall? Does it, does it help you in terms of construction or?
As opposed to that five-inch deviation of the.
As opposed to stepping back the addition that Mr. Malay is talking about?
It was, it really just became, you know, more of an interior design challenge at that point.
Okay.
So yes, the shell kind of aligns with everything, but the interior design to get sort of the, the width for a little bit more of a spacious cooking and eating area.
So the layout gets compromised if you.
Yeah. And that's another kind of intensive process we went through of, you know, not just an architectural solution, but even, you know, furniture arrangements. We went over, you know, half a dozen at least in, in space planning.
I do want to jump back in on the overhangs. The R6 zone doesn't have a specific reference to it as far as setbacks go. However, your definition of building area is what actually excludes roof eaves, roof overhangs, projections above entrance ways, and garage doors and chimneys projecting a maximum distance of 24 inches from the structure. Not entirely clear whether that 24 inches is only meant to apply to chimneys or meant to apply to that whole laundry list of things, but is that building area which the setback goes to?
Clear as mud.
Yeah, more or less. What is the, the overhang distance we're talking about here?
We're currently showing a two-foot overhang, so the 3.6 is really 1.6.
Okay, so the overhang itself is only the max 24 inches, so.
Yes, that's the maximum we should.
So that, under that reading, would be excluded no matter what, from the building area, therefore, the overhang itself doesn't count towards the setback.
And you chose that dimension for the overhang because it's in keeping with the current existing conditions?
It, it's actually a little above the existing conditions. Typically, large overhangs are a little bit more attractive, so we kind of bumped it up for the proposed addition.
Understood.
But if we did match the existing house, then they would be reduced. So I think that's something we're, we're willing to, to bend on. I don't, it's not going to have a detrimental impact on the design.
But from the street, would you really notice a 18 versus 24-inch?
No, the, the addition is, you know, at the, the final third of the house at the rear, so you're really not going to notice it a whole lot.
I'm going to get pretty, kind of simple here, but that, the overhang is roughly a foot from the property line.
A foot and a half.
A foot and a half. So snow, ice could conceivably fall on a neighbor's property. If that happens, I know it's an asphalt roof, but.
Sure.
And then something as simple as getting a new roof, even now, they have to go on the neighbor's property to put ladders up.
Sure.
Things like that. So it doesn't make it any better.
Right.
It's actually making it a little bit worse.
It would be difficult in those situations.
If you want to talk simply. Yeah. So I mean, I, I don't, I'd like to see them smaller, but it's not a, it's not a game changer, if that makes any sense.
You can't really go under 12 inches.
Yeah, right. That's my point. It's like, I'm, I'm just thinking neighbor-wise, you know, here's, I mean, how far is the neighbor's house from the property line? Is it, are they conforming? It doesn't look, I mean, I don't know. So are we, are we moving, are we moving something of the structure closer to the property line, even though it's the overhang?
Right.
You know, for the roof. I, it's, I mean, I don't know. I don't, I can't even explain it, right?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I was there. Yeah, I saw it. Yeah. Yeah. I'm just trying to figure out, you know.
There is, there is some space.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, there's some, yeah.
Any other questions for this witness?
Yeah, I just have one clarification from Mr. Malay's comment. The, in here, you're saying it's 3.5 feet. He had mentioned 3.4, and I'm stating on the survey, 3.4.
Yeah.
What's the actual correct answer? And it's the tightest pinch point.
Yeah, I'm showing three foot six, actually, so it's not engineering. So 3.5 according to my drawings, not 3.6.
So do we trust the survey, or do we trust?
I'm looking at the survey. It shows 3.2.
Yeah.
And is that from, is the survey showing it as proposed, or is it showing it from the existing deck that is pitched in five inches roughly?
3.4. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the, the engineer's drawing. It's 3.4. So that is the number.
Proposed 3.4.
Correct, proposed 3.4.
Do we know the dimension, the distance to the neighboring house?
Yeah.
It looks like at the 8.7 feet on the engineer's survey, the front.
Oh, yeah, there's 8.7, yeah. And then 10 foot.
And then 10 foot one, so it tapers kind of away. It's slightly angled. I do have some aerial images.
3.4 is what, three foot four and a half inches versus, yes, three foot six, talking an inch and a half.
Yeah, yeah.
4.8 inches.
I was close. 4.8.
Sorry about the discrepancy.
So now that alters our side yard setback request, right? Is that what we're talking about here?
I don't want to make sure it's accurate.
Yeah. So our total variance that you're then asking for for the side yard setback would be 3.4.
3.4, yes.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Is there anything you'd like to say in conclusion? No, nothing else.
I want to add that our neighbors really like us, and we really like them. So I know you're saying that, like, our kids play in their yard. They look for them all the time. It's like a retired couple, and it's like, I don't know if it would be an issue if our snow fell on them.
Well, they're, they're not here condemning your progress.
We didn't ask them to come, but I'm sure they would be.
I think we painted the house back 20 years ago, so.
Yes.
Have you spoken to your neighbors about this?
Yes.
Application?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Did they support the application?
Yes, of course.
Great.
They helped build it.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to carry, because it's, I know it's a minor thing, but think of it if you were the neighbor. Now you have this, I know that overhang is a silly thing, but it, it could intrude light, snow, rain, whatever the case may be, onto your property.
Yeah.
On a tentative consequence, you don't need to do it, but it happens. Just, I know structurally and visually and all that stuff, it's a very minor issue, but.
Do you want a reduction?
It's not a game changer for me if they do it or don't. I just, if the neighbors are okay with it, and you're pretty sure they're okay with it, and they're willing to test, I'm good, but. I don't want to be wishy-washy on it either, which I am being, but.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you for copying up your application. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none. Mr. Ball, can you please talk us through the conditions and the number of votes required?
So I, I don't have any conditions noted. There is no engineering memorandum that we are referring to. I know we've been talking about overhangs, talking about setbacks, so if the board feels that any particular conditions are warranted as far as that goes or as far as anything else, let me know. Otherwise, I don't have it noted at this point.
I, I have a question. I got lost in some of the numbers on the side yard setback. So what is the actual side yard they're asking for now?
3.4, 3.4 feet.
Instead of 3.5.
Okay, because I thought I heard inches before. I'm not going to fool you. Okay.
Not 3.4 inches.
Mr. Ugo, they did say three feet, four inches at one point, so the clarification is.
Okay. But it's 3.4 feet.
Yes.
All right. Number of votes that does have a devariance, five votes are required to approve. I'll just look around once more. Any conditions anyone want to see?
I think we're going to go with it as is.
Okay.
All right. With that, let's finish up the evening strong and have a barn burner of an executive session. What would we say?
Oh, you want me to kick it off?
Going one?
All right, fine. Listen, this is a unique one. This is a unique one. You know, as I look at it, the fact that your lot is slightly smaller than it should be, 10 feet, we may not be here for half of this. The lot coverage, the maximum FAR, the, even the three stories, it makes all perfect sense to me, and I don't have any concern. Where I have concern is this 3.4 feet, you're not improving it, you're actually slightly exacerbating it. And I think I'd be more inclined, and I don't have a direct answer on this, if you were to set that back to mitigate that dam, that, that impact, and push out the, the coverage further back, so maybe looking, you know, I, I just don't have an idea of exactly where I'd feel on this, but that 3.4 feet gives me concern. So as of right now, I'm undecided.
Is there a distance that is preferred, we'd be willing to give up a few inches on that side of the house?
So here's, so even if, how are you going to give up a couple inches?
Uh, it's open plan, kitchen, dining, we can shift it.
Even if you follow the currents, current layout of the house, it's 3.5, if you go up, if you go up past, if I'm looking at, if I'm looking at this correctly. Bear with me for a second. At the corner of, I guess it's the, where's the thing? The, the southeast corner of the structure, for the proposed addition, it's just 3.4. You go up eight feet, it's 3.5, but as my foreword was saying, you're talking an inch. I mean, where do you, where do I?
I, I think if we're going to go down this route, we have to give them some direction. All right, so whether it's.
I'll just get a very specific question. Could you, how would you lay this out if we said you, the, the addition needed to be in conformance with the 8.5? You have to give up five feet. Where would it be impacted, can you walk us through that? On the first floor, you're obviously impacting the kitchen.
Right, right.
So you would end up having to shrink your island down, and you're going to have a little bit of a jog, but you'd probably move your foot.
I guess the, that's the eight-foot side, just, I, you mentioned 8.5. No, no problem. It would, you know, it would trigger some, not heavy-duty redesign, but we would have to kind of go back to the drawing board. The, the small powder room that is currently existing would have to probably be rethought, um, on the second floor. Um, you know, that, that's more of a heavy-handed design change. The, the primary bathroom would have to, you know, go through some, you know, heavy-duty reconfiguring. Whereas if you said, you know, take it to four feet from the property line, I think that's much more manageable. So going from the 3.4 to four feet, um, I think that's more doable.
What level dictates, from your opinion, where it goes from inconvenience to completely redesign? Or massive impact, however you want to call it.
I think even if you get into the, like, the one-foot territory, it's, you know, we, we've spent a, a good amount of time even, you know, laying out, and it's not final, but laying out, you know, kitchen, millwork, and things like that, that's kind of the level of detail we've gone into design. So I would say, like, beyond the, the four-foot mark would, you know, not take us back to the drawing board completely, but, you know, it would take a little bit of muscle to, um, to edit.
Your, your kitchen layout, you have to have minimum dimension between the counter and the island, correct, for accessibility?
Sure, yeah.
Right, and then if you reduce the island by, say, a foot, you would only be able to, what, seat two people at that point?
Yeah, like, these are.
So this is the cascading effect, Jay, that happens.
Well, I know.
Like, the island itself could shift a bit, even retaining its, the same size, but, uh, yes, it was all very, you know, meticulously planned up until now.
Jay, let me ask you, just, the six inches, the fact that they're moving.
Don't make me the deciding factor, you know, let's hear from the board.
I'm starting with you, but we can throw it out to larger boards. Is that something?
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, if you.
It's moving towards.
I mean, anything more than 3.5, let's call it three feet, six inches, that's going to confuse me less. Anything more than three feet, six inches is an improvement over the existing. So I think four feet would be.
I would agree.
A nice number.
Don?
Here's, here's what I'm thinking.
It's, I mean, they, they put a lot of effort into this, that, even if they, if they did away with this addition altogether, they would still be 3.5 feet from the property line. So we're gaining a foot, how is that, how is, how is that helping?
Well, I mean, personally, I, personally, I was okay with the 3.5, I'm.
Yeah.
Three foot, six inches, but I'm hearing there's some concern about, you know, doing something better. I personally would be okay with keeping it at three foot, six inches, 3.5 feet, whatever you want to call it.
Well, I think, Don, this is, this is.
3.4, sorry.
This is their, this is what they're adding on, right?
Yeah.
And unfortunately, they're adding on in the area where the property line.
Yep.
Moves ever so slightly closer.
Yep.
To this natural extension.
Yep.
So the, the condition is not getting improved, it's getting exacerbated.
Well, I get it.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
By taking that extension and running it parallel based on the perimeter of the house.
Mm-hmm.
So, it sounds like some of us on the board are looking for not an exacerb, exacerbation so much, but, uh, sorry.
That's okay.
But a, a, a way to, um, reduce the impact of the.
I, I get what they're doing, yep, I get it.
Onto the side. And it sounds like maybe even six inches would head in that direction.
I'm just asking.
Comment on that, how is that going to look, though, six-inch jog in the wall?
A house of this nature and age, like, uh, was there all well? I mean, look, straight across is better, it's better for them internally, it's better for them externally, but if they're, if we feel like there has to be some sort of attention paid to not making the situation worse, then the board needs to give them that direction.
Okay.
Mr. Malay? What do you say?
I mean, uh, that was an opinion, it's up to the board. You go for the vote.
I can support it the way it is.
You can?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Malay.
Yeah, I, I can too, as I said earlier.
I like that we're trying to help them make it better, I just don't think it's going to happen, I mean, at the end of the day.
Yeah, I mean, what, like, like, it's not, to me, it's not six inches, four foot. I can support it.
It's also the back of the, back of the wall, right? I think that's another mitigating factor that we should consider, is the impact on the neighborhood, right? It's non-existent, because it's so deep and so far back.
There is a gray line, so that's why we're here.
No, no, this is why we're here to have conversations exactly like this. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve as is?
I'll make that motion.
I got a second.
I'll second it.
Jessica, can you please call the board?
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feskins?
Yes.
Mr. Chanchuli?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing?
Yes.
Chairman Leickets?
Yes. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a little business to attend to. Resolutions in a minute.
We have six resolutions tonight.
All right, I thought we were going to get out early.
Sorry for ruining that one.
We've got, we've got one more hour.
All right, first up is 49 Tulip Street, zoning board application number ZB dash two-four dash two-two-six-six. The eligible members to vote are Mr. Yuko, Mr. Malay, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Chanchuli, and Chairman Leickets. Can we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Chanchuli?
Yes.
Chairman Leickets?
Yes.
Next up is 67 Dale Drive, zoning board application number ZB dash two-four dash two-two-seven-zero. The eligible members to vote are Mr. Yuko, Mr. Malay, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Chanchuli, and Chairman Leickets. Can we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Yes.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Chanchuli?
Yes.
Chairman Leickets?
Yes.
Okay, next up is 65 Fernwood Road, zoning board application number ZB dash two-five dash two-two-eight-one. Eligible members to vote are Mr. Yuko, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Feskins, and Chairman Leickets. Can we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feskins?
Yes.
Chairman Leickets?
Yes.
Next up is 235 Morris Avenue, zoning board application number ZB dash one-nine dash one-nine-nine-two dash two. Eligible members to vote are Mr. Yuko, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Feskins, and Chairman Leickets. Can we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feskins?
Yes.
Chairman Leickets?
Yes.
Next up is a resolution of extension for 503 Springfield Avenue, zoning board application number ZB dash two-one dash two-zero-seven-nine. Can we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feskins?
Yes.
Mr. Chanchuli?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing?
Yes.
And Chairman Leickets?
Yes.
Okay, and this is our last resolution. It's a resolution of extension for 28 Druid Hill Road, zoning board application number ZB dash two-two dash two-one-seven-five. Can we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Feskins?
Yes.
Mr. Chanchuli?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing?
Yes.
Chairman Leickets?
Yes.
Next up, we have minutes from June 2nd, 2025. The eligible members to vote are Mr. Yuko, Mr. Malay, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Chanchuli, Mr. Nearing, and Chairman Leickets. Could we get a motion?
So moved.
Make a motion. I'll second it, whatever.
I'll second, if you need another second.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is the minutes from June 5th. The eligible members to vote are Mr. Yuko, Mr. Chanchuli, and Mr. Feskins. Can we get a motion?
So moved.
I'll second, it's fine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And lastly, we have the minutes from June 9th. The eligible members to vote are Mr. Yuko, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Feskins, Mr. Nearing, and Chairman Leickets. Could we get a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Nearing.